This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Wilfriede, North Haven's First Selectman, and welcome to our October North Haven Board of Selectment meeting. I'm joined, as always, by our Second Selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our Third Selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buwemi. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Item number one, I'd like to ask all of us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, any public comment to this evening's agenda? Okay, item number three, approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectment meeting of September 6th.
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four, in terms of the Selectmen's overview, Tammy, myself, and Valerie are working on several projects as it relates to the town, some of them administrative. But I wanted to ask Valerie to, if she would update us on some of the things that we're working on in our office. Val?
Sure, Mike. We have several events and happenings that are taking place, and I'll start out chronologically. We have a special town meeting that was worn on September 20th, which is being held on Tuesday, October 9th, here in Town Hall at 6:00 PM. And the purpose of that meeting was to appropriate $500,000 for the acquisition of open space. And the second item was $2 million for milling and paving of town roadways. And a third item, which I understand is being withdrawn, was to vote on amendments to Chapter 61 of the ordinances of the town, which pertain to recycling authority of the town. So those were the three items that were on the agenda for that meeting, which will now be two items. We have the North Haven Economic Development Commission is holding their Fall Breakfast on Thursday, October 25th, at 7:30 AM at Fantasia. And we're inviting local business owners and associates, as well as any interested community members, to attend. And anyone interested in attending just needs to contact our office. We also have registration online on the economic development website, but if it's easier, you can just call our office and register. We'd be happy to take that information. On Saturday, October 27th, our Substance Abuse Action Council will once again be participating in the DEA's National Pill Takeback. And we will be located over at Fire Headquarters. The hours will be from 10 to 2:00. And we encourage you to clean out your medicine cabinets, and this is a safe and anonymous way to turn in your medications that you no longer need or could be expired. We know that this is a very important cause, and the Town of North Haven has been participating in this for a number of years. I believe this is... We've been doing this twice a year since 2010. So it's something we're very proud of, and we encourage you to please take a look around the house and get rid of any meds that you don't need. The North Haven Recreation Department will be holding what has now become the annual trunk-or-treat event, and that event is also scheduled for Saturday, October 27th. Weather permitting, there will be no reschedule. And that will be from 4:00 to 5:00 PM at the high school in the parking lot. And that event does require preregistration, so we're asking our residents to please register if you're interested in participating. And you need to do that at our recreation office and the hours in person. And the hours are Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, so that does give working families a chance to get there. And on Friday, from 9:00 to 4:00. And then, once again, in collaboration with our American Legion Post 76, and the organizer, Paulette DiMaio, our residents will be volunteering their time and energy to provide leaf cleanups for our veterans in North Haven. And this is a wonderful event that's been taking place now for several years, and Paulette has been instrumental in organizing and having that event take place. So that will be on Saturday, November 10th. And all volunteers should meet at the North Haven Congregational Church at 9:00 AM. And Paulette says all you need to bring is yourself and a rake. So if you need more information, you can contact Paulette directly. She has an email at servingveterans, the numeral 112, at gmail dot com. Or you can call our office, and we'd be happy to give you information on how to reach Paulette. So that's another great event. And then also for Veterans Day, on Sunday, November 11th, the Town of North Haven, in conjunction with the American Legion Post 76, will be having a ceremony on the Green. And that will be taking place at 11:00 AM. And that will include the unveiling and dedication of our new post-Vietnam memorial monument, which we're very excited about and has been a long time coming, and we are very anxious for that to take place. And we're very appreciative to Colonel Ray Fowler as the spearhead behind this project. He's been instrumental in getting this done, and we're very anxiously awaiting that to take place. We invite everyone in town to please join us on the 11th, at 11:00, on the Green. So that, I believe, are all of our events.
Okay, just a couple of additional comments. Yes, a special thank you to Colonel Raymond Fowler, who for quite a long period of time handled the DD-214 process in the town here, working with Valerie and myself. So thank you very much, Raymond. Great job on that. And we hope to have a wonderful ceremony. Valerie and I are working on the agenda, and that should be out with pamphlets. Regarding the prescription pill giveback, as Val said, we've been doing it twice a year since 2010, April and October. October, we've taken hundreds of thousands of units out of medicine cabinets in the Town of North Haven. And one of the big missions of this administration is to create even more awareness on substance abuse. With our Substance Abuse Council, the programs we're offering in the school system, middle school, high school, we're looking to continue to create even greater awareness. Fifty-three percent, ladies and gentlemen, of those individuals who succumb to opiate and substance abuse start with prescription pill medications out of their own medicine cabinets. So that's something that we're really on a mission. And Val mentioned October 25th on the EDC, Economic Development Breakfast. At that meeting, ladies and gentlemen, I'll be updating the residents on TV and over 100 North Haven businesses, giving them a State of the Union address on what we're doing on economic development here, a topic that I spend a great deal of time on. So we'll be unveiling some announcements, new businesses, and we will be presenting successes, opportunities, challenges, and also what the future looks like. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Item number five, Sally, you asked to put this on the agenda.
I did, because, as you might recall, I've talked about this a couple of times. Last March, the Chairman of the Board of Ed, Anita Anderson, formed this ad hoc advisory committee to look into issues involving the synthetic turf fields behind the middle school. And I was fortunate enough and honored to be included in that ad hoc committee. And so we met, oh, maybe, I don't know, I lost count, six or seven times over the past few months. And we recently had our last meeting, and so I thought it would be appropriate, just in this forum, to give a summary. But, you know, for those that are very interested in the issue, they should either attend or watch on TV the November Board of Education meeting, because that is where Randy Peterson, who is a Board of Ed member, and she chaired our ad hoc committee, will be making a formal presentation and summary of all of our recommendations to the Board of Ed. And it's important to distinguish that this committee really only focused on Board of Ed fields in general, and specifically the turf fields, and not town fields such as, you know, the ones on Monowies, you know, behind my office, actually, behind the Fire Headquarters, Monowies Fire Headquarters, where Max Sinaway was. Fields like that, which are town fields, were not at all considered in this ad hoc committee. This was an advisory committee to the Board of Ed for Board of Ed fields. I mean, I understand there's... Whether it's a town field like Monowies, or Grover Wyman, or, you know, or a Board of Ed field, like at one of the schools, it's all town land. But there is a division of responsibility, depending on whether it's categorized as a town field versus a Board of Ed field. So we were only dealing with Board of Ed fields generally, and specifically the turf fields. So I could just quickly, you know, in an email, when Chairman Anderson formed our committee, she told us that the committee's responsibility is to discuss review and offer suggestions to the Board of Ed on field usage, field charges, access to fields, and financial planning for replacement of the fields in approximately 10 years. And in all of that, the word "fields" was in reference to the turf fields. So we did meet, and there are different charges that will be assessed, whether it's an out-of-town league that's using the turf fields, or a for-profit league. There's higher fees, and it depends on whether they're going to be using them with lights or without lights. And again, I would urge anyone with, you know, interested in the specifics to watch the November meeting. So we... And we looked at a lot of guidelines that other area towns had in fee schedules, you know, to get some guidance on what to do. We also made recommendations regarding access to the fields and signage, which was very important to me, because I'm a little concerned that there aren't really any major signs yet up there. There's just this little tiny sign that says, "No gum, no food," you know, the kind of footwear. It doesn't say, "No trespassing," you know, "You can't use the fields without advanced permission," you know, any kinds of protection, in my opinion, for the town for trespassing. So I'm hopeful that the... I know they're actively working on the wording of very large signs, similar to the large sign that's at Vanacore Field. So we made... Had some input and recommendations for the signage that will be going up. And then for in-town private leagues, and such as North Haven Youth Football, or Soccer, or Lacrosse, there's going to be an hourly charge based only on reimbursement for costs of maintaining the fields, which is basically the lights and the maintenance costs related to the fields themselves. So the in-town private leagues, there's no intent to make any money. They're simply looking for reimbursement of the cost of operating the fields. The goal is so that the Board of Ed, basically allowing private leagues to use these fields, won't affect the Board of Ed budget. So I thought that was a reasonable compromise, you know, because these are in-town leagues that are enjoyed by hundreds of kids. And you know, my dedication to sports in town has been going on for decades, so, you know, I certainly was in favor of allowing access of the Board of Ed fields to private leagues. But I also thought it was fair that we have, you know, that the Board of Ed recoup just costs, so that it doesn't affect the Board of Ed budget. So they're fine tuning that. And of course, any team affiliated with the Board of Ed, like the North Haven High School Soccer Team, or Field Hockey Team, you know, they're going to play, obviously, with no charge at all, because athletics is part of the curriculum at the Board of Ed, and their Board of Ed fields. And Board of Ed teams, like the high school teams, will have priority access to the fields, which I think is fair, because they're Board of Ed fields. And also, I wanted to make one comment in response to Ms. White's question, and she's our only attendant in the audience tonight. Ms. White had a question at the last Board of Finance meeting about whether any money had been coming in so far about usage, and I wasn't 100 percent... I said I'd look into it, and we did discuss it at our... At the last meeting. And basically, there has been some usage of the turf fields by some private for-profit teams. They're aware that they have to pay their hourly charge, but they haven't paid yet because the mechanism for billing hasn't been put in place yet. So the best answer that I could now give to Mary's question that she asked at the Board of Finance meeting, Mary, is yes, hours of usage have occurred, and they will be paying fees, but it's... They haven't been paid yet, which I think was technically your question last month. But finally, and one of the main reasons, besides giving this summary, another main reason that I put this on the agenda was, you know, when I read that charge that the Chairman of the Board of Ed gave to us, the last one was financial planning for replacement of the fields in approximately 10 years. When we were discussing that, the Chairman, Randy Peterson, of our ad hoc committee, basically said that we're putting discussion of replacement of the fields on hold, pending hearing what the town intends to do about replacing the fields. And since I'm the only... I was the only Board of Selectman member on this ad hoc committee, I felt many eyes kind of looking in my direction. And I said, "Well, all right, I will put it, you know, on the agenda to bring this up to Mr. Frieda, because it seems clear, not only from my discussions at this meeting with Ms. Peterson, but also from hearing concerns from the Board of Ed in general, that they really need to know what the plans will be to replace these fields." I mean, the low-end replacement estimate is around $800,000. I've heard 1.2, 1.3. Personally, I think because the $800,000 is based on current value of the current cost of the field, that it's probably going to be somewhere in between that low-end estimate of replacement and the high-end estimates that I've heard floating around. I think that's a fair assessment. So these folks are giving me the impression that they need to know whether it's just so they could plan accordingly what we plan to do, because last month's meeting, you said, correct me if I'm wrong, that we wouldn't bond for an asset that lasts such a short term. So, you know, I'm not really sure what we're going to do. And I... And before I finish, I just want to remind everybody and this board that at an April 2017 Board of Selectment meeting, during a normal or regular update of the Middle School Building Committee, Chairman Johns, who was the Chairman of the Middle School Building Committee Project, and Attorney Jeff DiNoffio, who was the Legal Counsel for the Middle School Building Committee, were here, and they were talking about how the fields would generate income, and that an account would be set up. And what I've been hearing from my participation in this ad hoc committee is that it's going to be really tough to make any money for private usage of these fields, because they don't have any significant amenities, like concession stand, or restrooms, or significant seating. There is a little set of benches. And that that's going to prevent us from attracting jamborees and other kinds of big events that could really draw in money. So the prediction back in April of 2017 that these fields would generate income and that that would be put aside toward replacement, I don't think is going to really pan out unless significant amenities are put there. I don't know. Maybe someday a big, huge corporation valued at a trillion dollars might come to town, and maybe they'll help. I don't know. If only that would happen. So that's a little side joke. The main reason I put this on the agenda is to give the summary, which I've done, and to say, "What do you see as the future plans for replacement?" They want to know. That's it.
Well, if I can offer a little levity, from the way you describe it, when all the eyes turn to you, I was reminded of a song billed by Simon and Garfunkel.
Oh, geez.
"A nation turns its lonely eyes to you." But I'm not concerned about this at all, folks. I got to be honest with you. Because what I can do... We can do a number of different things.
Because you won't be here in eight years, or because...
No, we can do a number of things. We can propose in each annual budget a capital plan of $80,000, $90,000 a year, subject to approval by the town residents. Or we could probably take some local capital improvement funds from the state, if we get that and apply it towards this. This is a subject, folks, I'm not concerned about at all. Yes, eight, 10 years from now, we're going to have to replace it, but we have several options. And if you're saying, Sally, that the Board of Ed needs direction from me, I will provide the direction, and we'll get moving forward on this.
Okay, well, again, those lonely eyes did turn to me, and I like that, you know.
Did you like the line, though, wherever you go, and Joe DiMaggio? "A nation turns its lonely eyes to you."
Yes, yes, that was from The Graduate.
So thanks for the update, though. I think it's very important.
Yes.
Now we know they're looking to me for direction.
They are.
The direction will be provided, and we'll move forward.
Thank you, I'm done.
It sounds like maybe, too, we'll end up with, instead of the low end of eight years, maybe a higher, you know, it'll take longer, because if we really don't attract any outside usage, other than the, you know, school teams and in-town teams, you know, it sounds like maybe that would be one of the things that would, you know, actually prolong the longevity of the fields.
Right, well, there are folks that think that only the Board of Ed leagues, high school affiliated teams should use them exactly for that purpose, to increase their longevity, and therefore allow more time to save, or whatever. So that's a good point, but, you know...
But even with the in-town teams, you know, again, it sounds like, you know, if we had out-of-town teams, or, you know, regional leagues using them all the time, it might be, you know, it might actually... And actually, actually, because you wonder, too, whether or not... What's been the experience, and maybe you can't answer that question, you know, for other towns that do have that amenity, those amenities, and what kind of revenue do they generate?
Yeah, that... Well, you know, we just saw their charts on what they charged per hour, and it ranged in the $250 per hour range, and that's... But as far as the amount of revenue that they generate holding events, I don't know. I don't, you know... But, you know, it's something that we have to plan for, for sure. I mean, we're already one year into the existence of the fields. You know, the first six months, they really weren't used very much. So that's it.
All right, that's a good summary.
I appreciate you accommodating me, as usual, and allowing the item on the agenda, and giving me the opportunity to give this update.
So Sally, who should I speak with? The Chairman of the Board of Ed, or the Chairman of the committee? Who would you recommend?
Well, I would say the Chairman of the Board of Ed, because our advisory committee has pretty much completed its task, except for advising on replacement of the fields. So that would be my recommendation to go to Chairman Anderson.
Okay, so now we know. Thank you for the update. Now I know what I have to do. They're asking for that. It will be done. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. All right, so Sally and Bill, if you can handle number six.
Yeah, I will move the reappointment of Robert Hannan, 26 Highland Park Road, as the Parking Violation Hearing Officer, for a two-year term to expire October 31st, 2020.
Can I all second that?
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
It expires on Halloween? That's odd. Usually they expire in August or December. This is weird.
It's just an odd... Some of them are odd dates, a few things here and there.
All right.
Do we have more than one parking violation hearing officer?
No.
No.
We just have the one.
Just the one.
I suppose I've actually seen that. Because we don't have that many parking violations, actually.
I don't think so.
You know, based on the... Be thinking about the budget, and what little we budget for parking violations. That's great that, you know, again, you know, thanks to Bob, for his volunteering to do that, you know, just like all the volunteers on these committees. And the next item on the agenda is appointment of Edward Jones, 1415 Ridge Road, to the Clean Energy Task Force. So I'll move that appointment.
Second?
All right, motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sally?
Yes, item seven. I will move all of the property tax refunds as listed in the agenda.
Yeah, I've reviewed them, and I'll, you know, based on Sally's motion, my review, I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, well, it looks like we're at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Tuesday, November 13th. Now, ladies and gentlemen, that's a little bit of a delay. Val, you want to explain that?
Yes, the meeting for November is not taking place on the first Thursday of the month, as it normally does. I believe we had a conflict with one of the board members, so we have rescheduled it to Tuesday, November 13th. It will be here 7:00 PM. Tuesday, November 13th will be the regularly meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you, Val. Item...
I was just going to say thank you to the other two members for being able to do that, because it was my conflict, and unfortunately, it was a conflict I'd actually... Something that I actually committed to, actually, a year and a half ago, so I apologize, before I even knew that I would be on the Board of Selectmen.
We always offer flexibility here, whether it's Sally or Bill, so that's fine.
I wanted to thank the other two members.
You're welcome.
No problem.
All right. Item number eight, public comment. Mary White.
I'm glad we have two officers here.
You're right. One of our least officers there, so...
Mary looks ready for battle, so pay attention, guys.
Mary White, Summer Lane. So I have a few things. The first is going to be the update on the Fire Department statistics, which I become known to give monthly, so I don't want to disappoint anybody. So since the last meeting of the Fire Commission, which was in June, there were 1,164 incidents. 334 calls were overlapping, representing consistently 28% of the calls as overlapping. 60% of the calls were EMS-related, not 75%, as some people seem to continually think that is the case. They provided ALS assistance to the hospital, where our paramedic went to the hospital 51 different times. 53 incidents to the highway, which is Route 40, Route 15, or I-91. So the Fire Chief also reported on year-to-date statistic. He said, "Year-to-date, the alarms in 2017 were 3,196, and currently, year-to-date, in 2018, 3,416, representing 220 additional alarms." Again, the trend is upwards. The five-year statistics in 2013, 1,953 alarms, and he stated that now there are 447 more alarms. Again, the trend is upwards. All right. So some of you may or may not know what the CAD is. So the CAD is the Computer Aided Dispatch System. So changes occurred in early July, and it's allowing the Fire Department to dispatch specific resources for incidents versus having dispatch resources based on geographical location. It's now geographically based and resource-based, allowing the Fire Department to track dispatching of an apparatus or the occurrence of a call, and whether or not an apparatus responded. With the new system, the Fire Department can account for 22 incidents. Since the second week of July, when the improvements were made, that the Fire Department had no units to send, or there was a significant delay in sending units. The system assigns a fake unit, so those numbers can be tracked and provided. So the chief reported that they collected $116,594... that they collected $116,594 in fire fees as part of the building process, and so far, it's $1.3 million collected. All right. He reported that Engine 1 is out again. It was out previously due to the head gasket, and now he said it's out again due to the head gasket. So, he was talking about, in the past, I guess, what had happened was, a demo model had been purchased, and it wasn't specked out, so it wasn't, you know, by the fire department, so it wasn't outfitted for our department. So, he stressed going forward, the fire department must spec out fire apparatus, fire vehicles. Okay. Oh, he reported the EMS billing is $100,000 remains outstanding. Again, there were 51 ALS assistance, where our paramedics, paramedic went to the hospital. He stated it takes several months for the insurance and Medicare to reimburse. Okay. So, I had submitted two questions to be answered at the Fire Commission meeting. And so, the first question basically was, why is it false that North Haven does not need to hire more firemen, paramedics, due to North Haven's population, type of call, size of the current department? So, the chief answered the question. He talked about predictors. So, he said, just to have a population as a predictor is not accurate, because the population includes, in North Haven, the daytime population, the evening population, the bedtime population, how much commercial we have, industry, critical infrastructure, and presence of highways. So, he provided five other towns, where he said, the population of those towns was plus or minus 5,000 in population to North Haven. So, the first one he provided, as far as like the number of firefighters on shift, was East Haven. They have 11 firefighters on shift. Branford received a grant and is going to 10 firefighters on shift. Westport has 16 firefighters on shift. New London has 16 firefighters on shift. Guilford received a Safer Grant, and they're going to 10 firefighters on shift. He also stated, some towns that we've been compared to do not respond to the same calls North Haven does. Are they providing ALS? Are they transporting? Let's see. Predicting the size of the department based on call volume, not accurate. He said, the north town of North Haven Fire Department continues to miss one to two calls per week, which are predominantly medical calls that are missed. All right. The second question I asked was, why is it false that fire trucks, old fire trucks, 25 years and older, do not need to be replaced because they are rolling? So, the chief answered that there are numerous issues with not replacing old fire trucks. He said, there is an increase in maintenance cost. The, okay, they are not reliable. It lessens the reliability of the apparatus. Sometimes, when responding to a call, the old fire trucks are not roadworthy as they are pulling out. There are alarms going off on the truck, you know, engine, you know, those kind of things going off. Problem, indicating there's a problem with the vehicle. There's something shaking in the apparatus. And, so they have to bring the apparatus to the contracted mechanic to have it fixed, and with that is downtime. He stated, they only have one backup engine. When two or three apparatus are out, there are no replacement backup engines. The chief wants each fire station to have at least one reliable engine in it. The chief stated, he's at the point where soon he will be forced to brown out a firehouse. Okay. In the next fiscal year, the chief will propose replacing at least one fire apparatus. In 2014, the fire department identified three engines to be replaced, and only one was. Those same fire apparatus are still out there and still need to be replaced. Okay. Now I've changed topics. Okay. Relative to the turf fields, I would like to once again thank Steve Blumenthal for his attention to the fields, taking the temperatures, and for being present at practices, games, and for training and speaking with the coaches. He made sure that the students were being hydrated and resting. We had numerous heat waves, where the air temperature was in the high 90s, and the feels like air temperature was in the 100s. And so, he reported, no athlete was injured. So, I think that that's really great. Relative to the turf field savings, I did propose to the Board of Finance, once again, the idea of setting money aside. And I have to say, particularly, one member on the Board of Finance offered quite an amount of pushback. So, that was really disappointing. But I will say that that Board of Finance meeting, the last one, very interesting. So, I encourage people to watch it. Let's see. Okay. So, Mike, you had stated two ideas for the plan to replace the fields. You said something about state funding, or residents can pass like a budget plan to send, set money aside yearly. So, another idea, is it possible to use some of the voluntary payment from Quinnipiac University, you know, the one in lieu of taxes? Can some of that go towards purchasing some of these field amenities?
Yes. However, I'm working with Chief Paul on the fire training facility that needs to be built in the back of Northeast, and I'm already in discussions with Quinnipiac on next year's voluntary payment. I want to try to help the fire department get that facility up and running, because it's very important to the fire department, and use as much of the voluntary payment from Quinnipiac to fund that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, in future years, I would say that's certainly a possibility.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot.
I thought that facility behind Northeast was going to be built with donated time and-
Not, not in its entirety, no.
Oh, okay.
No.
Am I remembering that incorrectly, that there was discussion of that?
The original discussion you might be referring to refers to students from Bullard Havens, I think.
Okay.
But that did not materialize. So, we think we can get, some of the material's still donated. There will be some cost of labor. I'm working with another organization on that. I was telling the chief today at our department head meeting. So, but discussions are already underway to have that funded through potentially the Quinnipiac voluntary payment. We've completed, basically, the placades for the children through the voluntary payments. So, I'm turning my attention to working with Paul, Chief Paul, fire department, to get the training facility up and running next year.
I just have one response to one thing Ms. White said. I, you were giving a fire department statistic of 16 per shift for Westport. I did look at Westport because their population was very similar to North Haven, but their yearly budget was 217 million. Ours is 98 million. I was trying to compare, when I was doing my evaluation of comparing North Haven's fire department to other like towns, I was trying to stay within, it's really hard to find another town exactly like your town that has the same, a similar grand list, a similar ratio of residential to commercial, the exact same type of emergency medical services, and whether it's round the clock, you know, like Farmington only has paid career firefighters for Monday through Friday, you know, eight to four.
Right.
It's really hard to find towns exactly the same. And I was staying away from some of the shore towns, because those fire departments have fire boats, and, you know, their budgets are impacted by special rescue matters related to Long Island Sound that we don't have.
Right.
But, you know, it's difficult. But I did look at Westport, but this didn't really include it in my evaluation, because its grand list and budget was more than twice our size.
Right.
So, I just wanted to say that, because she mentioned one town that I did look at extensively.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, on the issue of public safety overall, you know, I'm very proud of our two chiefs, our Police Chief Tom McLaughlin, our Fire Chief Paul Janushevsky. I work very closely with those two fine individuals. I respect them. They are on top of everything in their departments. So, we've got a great public safety agency here that includes both police and fire. And I'm very grateful for police efforts and fire efforts here in town. In the end, it's going to be a decision among the taxpayers of North Haven in next year's budget, in terms of what we can afford. And that's the plan. The workshop sessions, we'll have presentations. The chief is excellent on delivering the statistical information, and all that'll come into play in the January and February workshops. And that's what we look ahead to. Okay? Very good.
Which will, I think, address the turf field, you know, long-term replacement plan as well.
Mm-hmm. I mean, Mary asked a great question. I mean, that certainly can be applied, you know, with the Quinnipiac voluntary payment. So, we have a lot of options. That's why I mentioned earlier. I'm not concerned about this issue at all. We provide the direction. We try to provide a leadership. We move forward. We get things done. And I appreciate some of the insights. And thank you again, Sally, for the report.
Sure.
All right. Motion to-
Just one more thing?
I'm sorry. I might have misspoken. So, regarding when I was talking about the predictors on the size of the department, I think I misspoke. So, when the chief was talking about, there are different predictors, one of which is call volume. And, you know, besides population, the commercial that you have in town, industry, critical infrastructure, presence of highways, are you providing ALS? Are you transporting? And so, call volume is part of it, and that North Haven continues to miss one to two calls per week, which are predominantly medical calls. So, I just wanted to clear that up.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
That's exactly why I was advocating for weighted day duty last budget season, which would have put 10 people on duty Monday through Friday during the workday, which is when not all, but many of the multiple calls come in. But that was not advocated. But I thought it was a great idea and a great allocation of limited resources to meet the needs that you often refer to, Mary. So, but I also agree with the First Selectmen that we'll see what happens at the workshop process. And the First Selectmen has said many times that it's a, it's a process of evaluating needs versus affordability and, you know. So, we'll see what the Board of Finance does this season.
All right. Very good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next month, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for watching.
The 13th.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.